We don't want that again. So recognitions, awards, and memorials. I don't believe there are far any. So we are on to receipt of citizens petitions, comments, and concerns. A portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens petitions portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern and state their names and addresses for the record. And we have a few people signed up this evening. First on the list is Karen Morton.
Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Karen Morton, 67 Mariners Lane Mystic. I'm here tonight regarding a pending referral from the previous town council. I wasn't sure when you would consider it, so I wanted to personally share my thoughts with you in advance. At the prior council's last meeting, a large number of town retirees and union representatives appeared to request consideration for a cost of living adjustment to their pensions. This has been an ongoing issue for years, but one that has only now become public. When employees retire from the town of Groton, they are told their monthly pension benefit will remain the same for the first five years. Thereafter, they may be given a COLA every other year. The reality is that not a single union retiree has received one since 2007, and I'm not sure it's even been on anyone's radar. It would seem that once employees walk out the door, they are forgotten by the town in spite of assurances to the contrary. During the November election, the members of this council made an issue of the fact that my husband, who retired 15 years ago as captain of the Groton Town Police Department, received a cost of living adjustment to his pension benefit, as did four other eligible retirees in the non-union police management group. During the campaign, the implication was that this had occurred as a result of some backroom deal orchestrated by me, which is patently absurd. I had no involvement in the decision, but I am very proud of my husband's actions on behalf of his fellow officers. However, he should not have had to resort to appearing before the council to ask for something he was promised when he retired. No other COLAs were granted at that time because none had been requested, and therein lies the problem. It's my understanding the town expects the unions to request COLAs for the retirees, and the unions say they only represent active dues-paying members. Everyone passes the buck, leaving the retirees to fend for themselves. The COLA issue is particularly crucial to police retirees because they are the only town retirees not eligible to collect social security benefits. My husband's written requests to the prior town manager and HR directors were never even acknowledged, and I can't recall any council ever being asked to approve COLA increases for any retirees. The review process, which should be automatic, appears to have broken down completely. I would think the onus is on the town manager to advocate for the non-union professional staff retirees, but I've seen no evidence of that in the past. The confusion and lack of direction is precisely why I submitted a request for a standing referral on July 25th of 2017. It would require the town to conduct a review every year by a specified date to determine which town retirees are eligible for COLA increases and decide the percentage of the increase, if any, to be awarded. The City of Groton approves COLA increases every January for its retirees equal to the social security increase. This has always seemed to me to be a logical way to handle the process. While I realize the city and town have different retirement systems, town taxpayers do fund the entire city highway budget and half of the city police budget, both of which include pension costs.
One minute.
In essence, the town is currently subsidizing a more generous retirement benefit than it gives to its own retirees. The bottom line here is that the town of Groton has a fiduciary responsibility to its retirees. These individuals represent decades of service to the town, and they should not be demeaned by having to beg for consideration due them. I trust you will make the appropriate action to correct this disservice and ensure that town retirees do not continue to be overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Brian Neiman. Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of Ms. Morton's statement? Thank you.
Brian Neiman, 76 Allen Street in the city. I just wanted to make a quick comment on something that I believe I heard at the previous committee of the whole meeting where Mr. Reiner had brought up about possible development in the center Groton 184 or 117 corridor. If this should happen, I would hope that there would be some kind of coordination with the state that a left turn arrow could be added to the light going north on 117 and south on 117 like there is on 184, because all you need at a heavy traffic time is one car needing to make a left and not being able to for things to back up. If any further development comes to that area, that situation is going to be sorely exacerbated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. Carl Perizzati.
Yeah, Carl Perizzati, 69 Noble Avenue in Noank, the gardening capital of the world. You guys, when you were running for election, sent me a very powerful postcard, and it featured a bar graph, and it positioned you as being capable stewards of taxpayer money and your opponents embarking on more of a tax-and-spend philosophy. I thought it was a great postcard, and it earned you my vote, so now I'm hoping you'll back it up. Since you had a cool bar graph, I made one of my own. Not as good as yours, but it'll have to do. So this number represents the percentage that my home has increased in value since I bought it in 2004. Eleven percent, that's going by the assessor's numbers today. This number is a percentage by which my taxes have increased. You'll notice it's a bigger number, it's taller than I. In fact, this chart is to scale, one inch equals one percent. So you can draw your own inference. I draw mine every time I write a check, but then I was chosen to be a businessman. One thing I learned studying management is anyone can complain. It takes a manager to propose a solution. So I have three easy fixes. Number one, Balfour Beatty, an $11 billion English corporation that pays us nothing. You can't tax them because their assets are on government land, but you can build them. And for 15 years, your predecessors did nothing, that I can see. So I think you would ease the burden on the taxpayers by getting them to pay their fair share through some kind of a pilot program. I think it's fair, and I would certainly like it since I'm a taxpayer. Number two, a favorite of mine, the Noank garden. I think a community garden's a fabulous idea. I think the way this was proposed may not be the best idea to have 12,311 taxpayers fund gardens for 23 people. I don't know, I studied math at the Eastern Point Elementary School, so that's the way it shakes out to me. I would urge you to revisit the issue. And this time, unlike what was done before, allow both sides to express their opinions, and let's look at some facts. Maybe ask some questions. How many people? How many volunteer hours? Where are these people from? How many tons of food have they donated in the last two years? I don't think anyone knows, but it would seem like we'd want to know. Anyway, you've listed economic development as one of your priorities. This seems like a slam dunk to me, but again, I come from that background. And the third one is the interesting case of the Oddfellows. In my opinion, it's a case study in government incompetence and irresponsibility. That's my opinion. I think it's borne out by the publicly available facts of a state senator who worked against us, state representatives who did nothing to advocate for us at the hearing in Hartford, a mayor who did a dramatic 180. What I can tell, the town and all its employees and the whole town council was against the bill that was introduced granting this rather favorable increased tax-free status, and then the decision changed in the space of two days? Interesting. I think we ended up signing a deal that may not have been the best for this town. So I would urge you to try to understand what happened, and I imagine you all know the phone numbers of the state representatives. I know they've offered to come here and talk to you, and maybe you could appeal to them to rescind a law that grants a permanent $25 million tax exemption by that, on the first $25 million of value. And that's increased over time from the original act that gave them a tax exemption. Not on the first, not on the initial amount of money, but what it says in plain English is, as long as the value of that place was under $100,000, you'd have a tax exemption. Once it went over, it goes away. This thing is different. So anyway, in closing, I just wanted to say, I've been in business a while, most of it in finance, and the most important lesson I ever heard was from Benjamin Franklin, that a fool and his money are soon parted, and I'm counting on you to take a different approach to the way our money's managed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perizzati. Ian Thomas.
Hello, Ian Thomas, 159 Shenandoah Parkway. First off, I just want to second everything that guy just said. All those three points, I think, are great, strong avenues of revenue to explore. Mostly what brought me here today, it's not exactly a council issue, it's more something I'd like to speak to the community about. And in regards to the Groton's right-to-vote petition that has been circulating recently, basically advocating to put up to referendum the CRC recommendations from last year. And I just wanted to kind of put it out there to public knowledge that some, it's been related to me by some people in the community that, as they were approached by members of this group, that the group was not necessarily representing themselves or the actual aspects of the referendum with great clarity. So along those lines, I would urge anyone that has concerns about the CRC recommendation to seek out other groups and to also write letters to the newspaper and get the word out there. I believe there's a group on Facebook called Neighbors Representing Groton that also, that is kind of a counterpoint to the Groton right-to-vote thing. There's a lot of confusion there, I guess, that, over, like, what is actually being recommended and what is not. And I don't want to go into great detail here because it's not really a thing that the council votes on, but just urging the community at large to educate themselves and not sign anything. Do not sign anything unless you understand exactly what it is you are signing and supporting. That being said, I do support anyone's right to circulate a petition, but it's their citizen's responsibility to understand what they sign, and this is too important an issue to sign a petition just because it's a personal friend or because it's a party or someone's party that you think you're supporting. So understand the issues, I guess. That's mostly out to the people as opposed to the council. Otherwise, make a list of what he said. Thank you.
And that's everybody. Okay, thank you very much. So we are on to responses to citizens petitions, comments, and concern. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak? I'm sorry, I forgot who to do it. Yes, there is.
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shenandoah Parkway. I also wanted to speak about the CRC and just state that, you know, there seems to be a lot of confusion out there and that it's not being represented like it should be, and that I feel, you know, I'm hoping that the accountability on the other end, when these are counted, are being upheld to what they should be. Also with that being said, meaning that they're, I saw you shake your head, meaning that when they're being counted, that they're properly being looked over, because I feel a lot of people are signing this petition and really aren't getting the background or the education. They're getting a simple, one sheet of paper, kind of on a plastic board that states a few of the points, but really not the full representation of the full CRC in all of its, what, 26 pages, I believe. The other thing that I want to talk about is, once again, education. I know that we're supposed to be possibly talking about putting money back this year. Being part of an alliance district this year has major concerns for me. With that being said, I do feel that the money should be returned back to the education fund, but I also have some concerns about the direction of our education in this district in regards to how the money is being spent, in what areas. I've constantly been going to meetings, let it be Board of Ed meetings, let it be whatever meetings I can possibly get the word out, that I feel the reason we're part of an alliance district or some of my concerns is the fact that we are not funding remedial support. So with that being said, I'm hoping that if the money is returned, that Groton is going to take this money and properly put it where it belongs, which is back to the remedial aspects of our education. Currently, we fund a ton of money in the upper end of our education, up at the Fitch High School with all these different programs that we're funding, but where we're lacking is down in the lower levels. The children aren't getting the accessibility to remedial reading, math, language, English as a second language, and all those other resources are not properly being provided in this district. So I'm urging the council and the Board of Ed to, once again, return the money back to where we need it to go, and that is for remedial support in our districts so that we can get our children up to grade level. Also, some of my concerns with that, and it's more addressed to them, but some of my other concerns, it was brought to my attention that up at our high school, we do not have funding or money for books. My son came home with 100 and something pages of a novel that he's reading in his college prep class, I guess, and they had to photocopy 100 and something pages. And I looked at him, I said, "Well, what are you doing?" He says, "We're reading a book." I said, "Well, where's the book?" "They don't have any money, Mom. This is what I was given." And I was blown away. Contacted the school, contacted the Board of Ed, contacted the principal, contacted the teacher. Some kids in the class have the novel to read, others are reading papers that are photocopied, double-sided, flipped around, can't, they don't even get the option to touch a novel. That's what's being sent home. That was news to me. So where is the money going, is my question? How come children are not able to access literature, novels? I mean, a lot of the novels that they're reading are the same novels that they read over and over. Every child should have the right to have access to a novel, and these are some of the concerns about where is the money going? We're not funding the remedial support, and we're not giving the kids the textbooks. My response that I received back from the school is that they're using that photocopies to make notes on it. I referred back to them and stated that when I was in high school, I was still given the novel to read in its entirety and to note any of the notes that I had to on paper. There's other concerns going on. The books are not being provided, so I urge the council to look into that, as well as the Board of Ed to figure out how we can make sure every student is given a proper novel here in Groton. Thank you.
All right, so we are now on to responses to citizens petitions. Manager?
Excuse me, I've got a pretty bad cold, bronchitis, so please forgive my voice. Just to mention on the COLAs for retirees, we have requested those costs associated with it, and that will be looked at as part of the budget. And anytime I look at one piece, I look at the whole, so that won't be a, we'll be looking at it, I promise. Let's see, lost my place here. In terms of the mention of the turn signals, I'll make sure that gets passed on to John Reiner and them. And then, just to mention Balfour Beatty, we are, I am looking at that and working on that. And then Oddfellows is going to be a topic at our COW next week, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Any of the other, any of the councilors wish to respond to any of the citizens petitions? Seeing none, yes?
Question of a petition that's being circulated. To insinuate that there's something illegal being processed is an overstatement, and there's no way that a petition that isn't legal could be circulated.
I did not hear any of the citizens say that anything was being illegally done. I don't think that's what they intended to say, and I certainly did not hear anyone say that it was illegal. All right, is there a motion to move the consent calendar?
Make a motion to move the consent calendar.
Moved by Moravsek, is there a second? Seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? It passes unanimously. On to communications and reports. Town councilors first. Just Councilor Moravsek.
Do I need to report on reviewing the rules? We have a committee on that, it'll come to the COW next week.
Yeah.
I attended a very nice meeting at the Nautilus that was put on by the captain and admiral of the base, and wishing everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I would like to report that I attended a meeting this morning of the Children First Groton and School Readiness Council. I will have to confess, being new to this, that most of it went like that because it was all acronyms and names of people that they knew and so forth. But anyway, they, their charter, but their purpose or whatever is that all Groton children birth through age eight are healthy, safe, successful learners connected to strong families within a community that values diversity. And that's what this council is probably doing, and I was quite impressed with it. I told Conrad that I would continue working with them.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you. I would like to report that we received a donation to the Spicer Fund from Seismant Shapiro. The Spicer Fund, for those of you who don't know, is a, is, was a fund from years and years ago, decades ago, and it is used for social services, human services in the town of Groton, and it was a very nice donation that was made to that fund. Councilor Overy will be attending the change of charge ceremony at the Nautilus on behalf of the council. And then, because the town manager is having a little bit of tickling in his throat there, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things in the manager's report. If you'd like to read the weekly status report, it is online on the town of Groton website, so you could go there and you could read the full report in detail if you'd like. Flanders Road Transfer Station is accepting rural Christmas trees free of charge for disposal. Thought that was important and timely. Some things from the planning department that are interesting. The planning department is working to have the town of Groton participate in FEMA's community rating system, which would result in discounts in flood insurance rates for municipalities that implement best practices for reducing flood risks. The OPDS director attended a sustainability network workshop in Cambridge where they were talking about net-zero buildings as far as energy usage, so I thought that was interesting as well. And the City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission approved a zoning text amendment. And what that means for the town is that it will allow for creative redevelopment of the Groton Heights School, so that's good for everybody if we can get something done with that building. I think it would be very beneficial to everybody. Okay, clerk of the representative town meeting.
The RTM held their first meeting on December 13th, 2017, where Sima Evans was elected as moderator of the RTM for the term of two years. They discussed the ordinance to designate the Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Groton and to abolish the zoning commission, and the motion to veto did not pass. The RTM will be meeting again January 14th, 2018, at the Groton Senior Center at 7:30 PM. They'll have an opportunity to adopt new rules for the 31st RTM and other business from the town council.
And clerk of the council.
I do want to say that my deputy town clerk retired last Friday, Antoinette Pancara. She retired from the town of Groton of 31 years. We're very proud that she has taken the position in North Stonington as their town clerk, so that passed it on, so very proud. I also wanted to report that we've received, let's see, how many pages? 39 pages for the petition. It's a 2016 Groton Charter Revision Commission to Referendum on November 6, 2018 state election, and of those pages, 27 have been verified, having 488 valid signatures, so there's still more out there. So they have to get at least 1,900 signatures by January 12th.
And department heads, as I see, no report tonight, thank you. Moving on to room numeral eight committee reports. Personnel appointments met this evening, is there anything you'd like to report now or holding up?
I don't think there's anything to report yet.
Okay, temporary rules?
That will be coming to the committee of the whole.
And speaking of which committee of the whole, we have a meeting scheduled for the ninth back here. All right, on to new business, number nine, a room numeral nine on your agenda. And this is the resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Board of Education. This requires suspension of the rules to consider this item, so the first thing we need to do is entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Make a motion.
Second.
By Parker, seconded by Moravsek. All those in favor of suspending the rules to consider 2017-0301, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So the move to suspend the rules passed unanimously. Now entertain a motion for 2017-0301, and if you would please, if you could read the resolution, please, including the whereas. Anybody up for this?
2017-0301, supplement appropriation of the Board of Education. Resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Board of Education. Whereas the Board of Education fiscal year ending 2018 appropriation was reduced due to proposed cuts to the State Education Court Sharing Grant, and whereas Groton was designated as an ally, alliance district by the State Department of as an alliance district by the State Department of Education as of July 1st, 2017, and this designation continues for five years, the fiscal year ending 2022. And whereas an alliance district designation requires that the education funding cannot be reduced for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2018, and June 30th, 2019, and whereas Connecticut State Department of Education has determined the 2017-2018 minimum budget requirements, MBR, calculated, calculation is the fiscal year ending 2017 budget appropriations Now, therefore be it resolved that $1,568,239 is appropriated from the General Fund, unassigned fund balance to the Board of Education Function 1080, to meet the minimum budget requirements, MBR, and referred to the RTM for approval. I so move.
Second. Move by Morawcik and seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion on this item? Councilors of Perry?
There is, one of the wherethas says that whereas Connecticut State Department of Education has determined that the 217 to 218 minimum budget requirement is $76,468,239. But we haven't seen any, it's just stated baldly without providing any memorandum from the department, or any citing of what that actual memorandum is. I think that if we're gonna make assertions like this, we should provide the evidence, or at least a citation to it, that can be publicly found, so that we can look it up and see just what was that.
Dr. Grinear, would you like to address this, please? Thank you. And we have Chairwoman Watson here as well. Thank you for coming out.
As soon as they get back to my office, I'll send you the official, Mr. Chambers is the-- Kevin Chambers is the official. And he actually calculated, based upon this year's statutory language, this year. So, I'll simply forward that to the clerk tomorrow. It was actually a simple, about ten-word email, that basically said that the calculation is the appropriated amount from last year, and then, when they checked the appropriated amount, it was 76,248,239. So, but I'll send that tomorrow.
Councilor Overy also had some questions, please?
I don't know, it's not really what we're doing, but I wanna ask a question anyways. The Alliance District designation, would your goal be that at the end of the period of time, that this is for, that it be gone? That we don't have that designation in the future?
Yes.
Okay, because I feel that it's a two-edged sword. I'm happy that we got the money, we needed the money.
Yes.
But I think it takes away from people thinking and knowing that we have good schools.
Right.
So, if that's your goal, I'm happy.
I plan, Mr. Burton and I meet monthly, and one of the things we agreed is that I'm gonna come back, hopefully you'll invite me, to be part of, I think it's the second COW meeting, at least it was for the other council. And I'm gonna be going to a meeting Monday for the new, there are three districts that were just added to the Alliance District, and I've been struggling to figure out exactly why Groton was on the list. It is a function partly of the scores that the children received on the statewide test. It's also a function of free and reduced lunch. And there are, there are a number of measures. So, I certainly wouldn't wanna point, to point out that being on the list is necessarily a horrendous thing, but the reason, the reason the state, actually, we're gonna get some additional funding, the board will get some additional funding for, from the grant, but the reason the state is doing this, obviously, is to support the school. And the school districts, the thirty, it's now the 33 districts that have been identified in the state that can use this, can use this help. But when I, when I come back, whenever it is, the fourth, Tuesday of the month, I hopefully will be able to explain to you exactly where we are, what, what sort of measures were used. And, yes, in a nutshell, we intend to use the money wisely to provide the services, and to ultimately, after a five-year period, get off the list.
Okay. And when you do come back for our next meeting, perhaps you could come with an explanation for us, for the questions that was asked tonight about the textbooks, or the books of high school.
Oh, sure.
I think that would be important.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Grinear? Or, so, if anyone else has a first-time question? No? Okay, go ahead.
I understand that in proficiency testing, the Groton District ranks 91 out of 137. Is that correct?
I don't know that. It would be a very complex measure to get it down to, in other words, the testing is grades three through eight, and then, high school, and it's done in literacy and done in mathematics. So, I know our, and it's done in science, I know that our scores have, would range, so it'd be difficult to--
I learned this from the internet. And the thing about it is that we're, we're looking for objective measures of how our programs are working.
Right.
And if that's an objective measure on proficiency testing, then we're well below the mean in proficiency, and our kids learning what they need to learn, and our schools are not performing regardless of how much money we put into them. And I know that we're paying over $17,000 per student in Groton for the course of their education, whereas the median in the state is $15,000 per student.
Where did you get the 17,000?
Also, material that's on the internet.
That's not the number that I have.
What numbers do you have, sir?
About 16,800. I mean, 15,800, about 15,800.
So, we're spending--
It's probably about the state average.
How many students do we have in the census?
5,000, well, 4,900.
4,900?
About 4,900.
It's probably zillow.
I'm sorry?
It's probably zillow. They're wrong on everything.
Yeah. That also doesn't agree with what I see on the internet. It's coming up closer to 4,000.
Yeah, let me, let me explain, if I could.
Yes.
There are, there are two numbers, and we fought this battle with the State Department last year.
Yeah.
There are two numbers that are often used. The number of students who walk through Groton doors, Groton School doors, is 4,400. But the number of children for whom the board pays their tuition, they are financially responsible, is 500. So, if you look at the Groton budget, the budget provides for the education for 4,900 some odd students. Some of them, 500 of them, go to magnet schools, for which we pay, of course, we pay tuition. So, there's a few hundred students who go to Lurin Schools, like the Marine Science School, a few hundred students who go to New London Public Schools, about 35 that go to the Ledger de Volagge program. So, that tuition, when you add all that tuition up, it's about 2,400, $2,400,000. So, those two numbers, it's, I certainly understand the confusion, because it is sometimes reported that we only have 4,400 students. 4,400 students for data purposes, for student achievement purposes, but 49, 4,900 for ECS, for financial, because we are financially responsible for 4,900 children.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Heath has a question as well?
Well, I finished it. May I complete the question?
Yes, but then, other people have to talk as well, so.
Could you, would you be kind enough to send us also what the census of the school is?
Oh, sure.
The school district, and also what the actual cost per student is?
Okay.
And--
Let's go with that.
I'd also like to know what the average performance on the proficiency testing was for the school system.
Sure.
I understand that schools like Overmystic do reasonably well, and schools in the other parts of the town do more poorly. And we'd like to look, I'd like to look at that also.
Sure.
Before, before Councilor Heath speaks, is that information online on the district website? That we could look it up there, rather than having you have to pump information out to us?
I'm not sure, but it's readily available.
Thank you.
I could send it out easily.
Councilor Heath was next.
I have three questions. Feel free to interrupt me if somebody else has a follow-up. So, how much exactly are we restoring to the school budget?
1.5.
1.5 million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it would be good to know. I think it was already stated, like, what specifically we would spend it on. For example, I know we won't reopen a school that's already been closed. But also, do we have to spend all the money? What happens if you don't spend it all? And, well, that's it.
Well, I'm gonna wait.
It's so funny that you asked. I'm just gonna take a seat for a second, so I can sit by the microphone. What is being passed out, and Patrice, you saw a prototype of it, but it's been changed quite drastically since the last time you saw it.
Thank you.
And actually, that was one of the reasons why I met with Patrice, is that we were going to be having a conversation before winter break about, once the money got appropriated back to us, what were we going to do with it? And so, in our meeting, if you looked on the top part of the sheet, you're gonna see the 959. And so, we were able to kinda talk about what we wanted to do with at least a portion of it. And in our discussions about that, if you notice, they are all, they are all staff. So, it is providing back the literacy, the math supports, paraprofessionals, special education teacher, math tutor, are all being back restored. But once we get the monies back, these would be the positions that we would fill. And as you know, trying to hire someone, it takes a couple weeks, and so, we kinda wanted to at least kinda get it back into the swing as much, as soon as possible. The bottom part of the sheet, as you can see, are other, are other things that were drastically reduced when our monies were reduced last year. But we didn't feel like, as a board, that we could make that, at that meeting, that we could feel like we could make that decision about what parts needed to get, to be restored quick, as soon as possible. And so, we really wanted to just vote, make sure that people understood that we wanted and we needed the staff to support our district, and that we are going to be at our next meeting, our voting meeting, which is the end of the month, having the conversation about those other items. Did that answer your question?
It does, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Parker, and then Councilor Morawcik.
Hi.
Hey.
The question about the math specialist, literary specialist, I know it was split in half, does that mean they're gonna get a full team?
Yes, that's right. We're gonna make--
Get a whole team.
Yeah, we're gonna make, we're gonna make all of those positions whole. So, you'll have a whole position, not a person, like, we don't have a person.
So, they won't split their time between the two schools?
No, nope, nope.
We're actually gonna restore those positions that were cut.
Councilor Morawcik?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'd like to see some of the money, now, you know, a portion of it, go to maintenance, go to a roof, or something that's needed. We seem to be giving money, and it goes to areas where it's much needed, but I don't see anything about building maintenance in here. I see building equipment, but that's not necessarily maintenance, in my understanding.
There is some site budget money that will be restored, because we basically cost 15% out of everybody last break. So, the maintenance department will get restored, and some of the equipment that really is sort of essential to the maintenance, some cleaning equipment, for example, we hope to restore those things as well.
But things like the roofs and the structural things, those are our CIPs, and as you know, they have been sort of kicked down the road, so, so those structural things, I hear what you're saying, but, but we are also, but, but once again, going back to, we wanted to have more information, and we actually asked Dr. Grinear and his staff to kinda come back and kinda talk a little bit more about those other, those other things which are in the bottom part of the sheet.
Thank you.
Anybody who hasn't asked a question yet would like to speak? Councilor Schmidt?
I'm just hoping that some of this will go into books, because I was really appalled to hear that you are auto-stating books to give to students.
Well, we have, we have plenty of books, but in many cases, we like students to be able to annotate. I don't know the specifics, but I certainly talked to the principal about that. At the elementary level, I can tell you that we frequently have the children use yellow stickies. It is sort of a fundamental reading skill that we like to teach children, if they don't own the book, to, you know, to read a paragraph or two, and then put a yellow sticky in and write some sort of brief summary, or something like that. The, what is going on at the high school is, there is a site budget there, it was cut, but, but I am not aware that the principal needed money for books, so I'll, but I'll address that. I'm not, I'm not sure if it's a lack of money. This may be an instructional strategy. It bothers me that we're running off 100 pages, 'cause it sounds like there's copyright.
It's a short quote.
If nothing else.
Thank you.
Councilor Franco?
So, currently, the state has not given us any money for the Alliance District, is that correct?
Correct.
But we have to comply with something that we're not really sure of yet.
Yes, yes. Well, yeah, that's the meeting on Monday. What the state does, I've had some conversations with them already, many districts get multimillion dollars for this, like, four or five million dollars. When Groton was added, they actually expanded the list from 30 to 33, and the commissioner called me up about a month ago, and was very apologetic, and said that Groton had been added to the list, but we'll get no money. And of course, I was so happy that we got the $5 million back, I didn't really particularly protest. But the person who runs the program actually called me up, and he, he was really concerned about exactly what you just said. So, somehow, they allocated $600,000 this year that will come to the board. But what, what he said was, they're not going to tell us how to spend it. What they're gonna do, sort of along the lines that Councilor Superior was pointing to, we're gonna look at those areas where we think, like, let's say, for example, it could be math. Well, if we have a weakness in math, and again, I haven't really seen these data, our data are very similar to the state averages, by the way. So, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, but once we figure out, one of the measures I know is absentee rate. Another measure is high school completion. Another measure is percentage of free and reduced lunch. You know, we're not gonna have any impact, I can imagine, on the free and reduced lunch, but, but let's say, as I said, it's math. Well, then, what, what we're gonna have to take a look at is, what could we do to significantly support-- could we do to significantly support student achievement in the area of, of math? It, it could be ranging from everything, from tutors to some sort of, uh, software program, uh, that, that, that may help the, the children more, but I, I have to sort of figure that out, but that's, that's how, that's how the money will be allocated ultimately. Well, we'll figure it out and then we'll go to the board and, uh, explain what we think should be done.
So you're putting, you're putting aside like a million dollars to these top items, and then the remaining is sort of, we're gonna decide?
Correct.
And possibly the Alliance District expenditures?
It is, in addition...
So are you going to figure out the plan before you actually allocate all this money?
Yes.
Okay.
That's exactly what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Counselor Atwater, is there anyone who hasn't spoken? Okay, any second-time questions?
Yeah, my, um, on here, on your list, I see what is a math specialist and literary specialist going back to Cutler, or, yeah, they are, you're just letting them have their whole body?
Um, it's not exactly that, it's that when, when we, when we closed Pleasant Valley School, uh, we, we still had three hundred children that, that, that we had to educate, and so we, we moved them around the district, it's, it's not like we closed the school because of decreased enrollment. Uh, so we sent scores of children to, to Charles Barton for, uh, and my first thought was we needed to allocate classrooms, which we ultimately found, uh, but what we didn't do was provide, in some cases, for example, in Charles Barton, uh, there are some special education teachers that have a very large load, because we, we didn't accommodate that, because we cut two million, uh, eight hundred, eight hundred forty-five thousand dollars, uh, but now we will be able to address that, that shortcoming, which, which would be great. Uh, so what you see here are, when, when children were sent to, to, to schools, in some cases, they're, uh, they were not sent with support personnel, so this is what the plan we were trying to address.
So Counselor Over, you said Cutler, he was responding to the Charles Barton?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so your question about that was...
I'm wanting to know, I'll put it out basically, I wanna make sure that Westside and Cutler are across the board, same kind of education.
Yes.
We are, you are speaking to the board, I mean, truly, that is, that has been, um, that has continuously been a drive for the board members, is to understand that what happens at Cutler needs to, uh, comparable education to both at Cutler and Westside.
That, I appreciate that, thank you very much. It's a little hard to understand sometimes when you, you see these things, but you don't see it from a local way.
That's, that's why we had the list in front of you so, and that you guys can then ask your questions, 'cause I think you're right, I mean, um, as you were saying about the acronyms, I mean, it's just, like, I, I've been living and breathing and speaking this for six years now, and so, um, please feel free to ask any of those questions.
Thanks.
Fourth-time speaker?
Sure.
Go for it.
Uh, I, I just wanted to clarify my position, I, you know, when we ran for election, we said we would ask the hard questions, we'd make the hard choices. I also, uh, uh, we also said that among the most important things we do in our town functions is to educate our children, and we want to support that. However, we want from you evidence that the money is well-spent, we want to see our children performing at higher levels on the proficiency testings, because those are the only objective criteria that we have. The free lunch program is not something we can do much about by supporting additional funding, but I think that, that the proficiency of the children as they learn in our schools is vitally important. Uh, I, it's not only vitally important for them and their, their futures, it's vitally important for the town. We find our population is decreasing, and incidentally, I think the numbers I read for the year's census was about four thousand, four zero and some number after that, but it was...
If you could tell me, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll look for it again and send it to you.
Right.
But I, uh, I, I think that we would like to have objective evidence that the school system is improving and that the kids are performing better than they had before. And we find that when, when our population is decreasing, when people are looking for a place to live and they look at Groton, if they have children and say, oh no, the schools are terrible there, you don't wanna live in Groton, you wanna go to one of the towns that has a better school system. So I'd like to be able to say, hey, we have a great school system here, and I've always said that, because I started out through the Groton school system and I think I had the best teachers I had anywhere in my time at Fitch, and I've been to a lot of different schools. But, uh, I, I, I just wanna emphasize, we're behind you, but we're also kicking a little bit and screaming, we want better, so that's what we have to do.
Thank you very much.
You obviously have been speaking to my wife. I have good children in this school system, believe me, I get it every day. But I'm gonna, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I welcome your questions.
If there's no further discussion, are we prepared to vote? All right, so we're voting on twenty seventeen, zero three, zero one, the supplemental appropriation for the Board of Education, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passed unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out and we'll look forward to that information at the cap meeting. Thank you.
You're gonna be referring to your team.
Yes. Twenty seventeen, zero two four six, an introduction to ordinance, amending various ordinances to increase fines, um, this doesn't have any action associated with it?
You don't need to do this, they announce it, and stop, and you just usually just read, like, the first little paragraph.
Would you like to read the first little paragraph, the introduction of the ordinance?
Sure. Introduction of an ordinance to amend section one dash seven, seven dash thirty-one, ten dash one oh one, ten dash one forty, ten dash one eighty-four, eleven dash fifty-six, and eleven dash eighty-one of the code of ordinances.
That's all.
Okay.
Thank you, and that takes us then, the, the text of the ordinance is available, if anybody would like to read it online. That takes us to twenty seventeen, oh two four seven, and this is the resolution setting a public hearing on the ordinance that, uh, Counselor Over just read, amending various ordinances to increase fines. Is there a motion to do this?
Certainly.
By Counselor Heath, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Morosik, and now we need, uh, the resolution resolved, please. There you go, resolved.
Resolve that the town council holds a public hearing on an ordinance to amend sections one dash seven, seven dash thirty-one, ten dash one oh one, ten dash one forty, ten dash one eighty-four, eleven dash fifty-six, and eleven dash eighty-one of the code of ordinances on Tuesday, February sixth, two, twenty eighteen, at six thirty P.M. in Town Hall Annex, Community Room Number One.
Moved by Heath, seconded by Morosik, any discussion on the setting of the time for the public hearing? Seeing none, all those in favor of setting the public hearing date, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that passed unanimously. So we are on to twenty seventeen, zero two eight five.
Last one question.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to ask the question, the, um, the thought was brought up of making the ticket different, that it would be part of an envelope, and I think you said that you'd had some discussion about that. Should I wait till the public hearing?
That would probably be, that would probably be best at this point, too.
I'll wait till the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Perhaps you could send, uh, send the chief, um, an email and then he can have it ready to respond at the public hearing.
Somebody's gonna ask it.
That'll be an error, probably, yeah, take the main.
Sorry about that.
So twenty seventeen, zero two eight five, building permit fees, is there a motion? Anyone like to read the resolve? This is a resolution authorizing building permit fee changes.
Right here?
Um, moved by Parker, would you like to read the resolved and the further resolved, please?
Second.
Read the resolved and the further resolved, please.
The first one, or the top part, I'm sorry.
Um, you need on twenty seventeen, zero two eight five, resolved...
Resolve that the revisions to the inspection fee schedule as presented to the town council in, in the memorandum dated December fifth, two thousand seventeen, are hereby accepted and approved and be it further resolved that the revised building permit application fees will take effect upon passage of this resolution by the town council.
Moved by Parker, is there a second?
There's second.
Seconded by Overe. Is there any discussion about the building permit application fees? Seeing none, all those in favor of twenty seventeen, zero two eight five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that passed unanimously. So we are on to twenty seventeen, zero two eight seven, supplemental appropriation for Would, uh, Counselor Atwater, please read the resolved for us?
Resolve that three hundred and fifty thousand is appropriated from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the contingency fund one zero seven four and refer to the R T M under rule six point five point three for approval.
Moved by Atwater, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Schmidt. Any discussion on the supplemental appropriation for contingency? Finance Director Landry is here if you have questions. Seeing none, all those in favor of twenty seventeen, zero two eight seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so unanimously. We are rolling on. So we are now on to twenty seventeen, zero two eight eight, contingency transfer for wage increases and other items, and with this one, we need the resolved read along with the, um, the accounts and the dollar amounts, so someone who's ready to read a bunch. Counselor Parker, thank you.
Resolve that four hundred fifteen thousand fifty-two dollars is transferred from the general fund contingency function number one oh seven four to the following general fund departments slash functions and refer to the R T M six point five point three for approval. Transfers from contingency to functions, um, one thousand one legislative policy thirty-two dollars, one thousand three photo registration five hundred and three dollars, one thousand five town clerk three thousand nine hundred forty dollars, account number ten ten executive management sixty-three thousand six hundred fifty dollars, ten eleven information technology five thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars, ten thirteen finance twelve thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars, ten twenty-four public safety two hundred seventy-one thousand eight five hundred eighty-nine dollars, count number ten thirty-five public works ten thousand and thirty dollars, ten forty-six planning development nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, ten fifty-one human services nine thousand and fifty-two dollars, ten sixty-three the library eighteen thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars, and ten sixty-four parks and recreation nine thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars, equaling a total of four hundred fifteen thousand fifty-two dollars.
Someone, thank you. Moved by Parker, seconded by Morosik. Is there any discussion?
I, I would just com-
Counselors of fair?
I would just comment that we discussed this in depth at the committee of the whole meeting, and I think we all approved of recommending this for resolution.
Correct, um, and, thank you for bringing that up, we should, I should've mentioned that earlier. Um, many of the things that you see happening at the town council meeting have all gone through the committee of the whole, where the counselors discuss in, in great depth, um, and we ask many questions at that point, so what you see happening tonight, you may think it's just rubber stamping, but we've, we've delved into this in great detail, and this is just part of the formal process here, so if you're interested in the details, you can go to the committee of the whole meeting and, um, look for the information there. Any further discussion? All those in favor of twenty seventeen, oh two eight, the contingency transfer for wage increases, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so passed unanimously. So we are on to twenty seventeen, zero two eight nine, a supplemental appropriation for the town hall complex. Representative Schmidt, could you read, or Counselor Schmidt, sorry, would you read that, please?
Certainly. Uh, resolve that the fiscal year ending two thousand eighteen C I P project number six C, Town Hall Complex, be increased by an additional appropriation of seventy-five thousand dollars from the capital reserve fund's fund balance and referred to the R T M six point five point three. I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Parker. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of twenty seventeen, oh two eight nine supplemental appropriation for Town Hall Complex, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so passed unanimously. And we are on to twenty seventeen, zero two nine four, which is the appointment of the town council personnel and appointments committee by the mayor, um, the mayor hereby appoints the following members to the personnel and appointments committee for the thirty-first town council, Counselor Schmidt, Counselor Heath, and Counselor Morosik, so thank you for serving in that capacity. Now on to twenty seventeen, zero two nine eight, and in order to consider this, we have to suspend the rules, so at this time, I'll take a motion to suspend the rules to consider twenty seventeen, zero two nine eight, Boulder Heights Conservation easement.
Make a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll second.
Moved by Morosik, seconded by Parker, all those in favor of suspending the rules to consider Boulder Heights Conservation easement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously, so now we will entertain a motion for twenty seventeen, zero two nine eight. Uh, let's see, Counselor Franco, would you read the resolved, please? Oh, you can't read the resolved, 'cause I have it. If you could read, um, read the whereas that's on the paper and then, these are the resolved, I'm sorry, do you want me to do it? All three, all four, the whereas, five, all of them? Let me do the whole thing? Let's just go, can we just do the resolved?
You really ought to read all of them, okay, so people know what you're voting on. I mean, that was, it's a dollar.
On the top to the bottom.
Resolution authorizing a conservation and public recreation easement on the Boulder Heights property, whereas the town of Groton purchased the merit property on Fort Hill Road, Groton Long Point Road for open space and recreational uses, and whereas the town of Groton intends to build a new combined middle school on the merit property consist, consistent with the Groton twenty twenty school plan, and, whereas the town of Groton has received permission from the state of Connecticut to substitute the Boulder Heights property located at the end of Culver Avenue for the merit property for future recreation use, and whereas in the future, the town will plan for the development of recreational trails and/or fields at the Boulder Heights property, and whereas, the filing of a conservation and public recreational easement is part of a required state process for approval of the land substitution, now therefore be...
And then switch to the other paper, there were some language change. Begin of time? Be a resolved, yes, please, thank you.
Resolve that John Burt, town manager of the town of Groton, be and hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the municipal corporation, a conservation and public recreational easement with the state of Connecticut to dedicate twenty point two seven, plus or minus acreage, of real land located off Zero Long Hill Road for open space preservation and recreational purposes. In addition, that John Burt, town manager, is hereby authorized to enter into such agreements, contracts, and execute all documents necessary to said grant with the state of Connecticut, and be it further certified that John Burt was appointed to town manager in his term of office begin on July fifth, two thousand seventeen, and will continue until termination or retirement. As a town manager, John Burt serves as a chief executive officer for town of Groton and on January second, two thousand eighteen, had both the authority in the office to enter into the conservation and public recreational easement on behalf of the town of Groton.
I so move. I so move. Move by Franco, seconded by Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Counselor Morosik?
I, I would've liked to seen a, a plot plan of this, this land, I mean, I, I don't know where, where it is, and, uh, it may be adjacent to property that, uh, we're looking at for, probably for development, this may be causing some problems if we could, we, uh, transfer it to the state, so I, I really would like to have seen a, a plot plan, I know we have to do it, because it's, uh, we're, we're giving the state equal amount, but I don't know where that equal amount is, I, I can't picture it.
I believe, I believe it was published out there, but, um, we'll let the town manager address this.
I mean, I might've seen it, but I can't.
It's off of, if I'm not mistaken...
Highway break, a little bit highway, they're changing there.
Half Long Hill Road, and then you go...
If you go down into the two, uh, condo complexes down in the back, and if you were to try to drive straight through... to drive straight through, you're going to start seeing boulders. And so it was named. It's not very good land.
I just couldn't picture it. I know it's back there, but.
Again, I know it's something we have to do, but I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's comparable for what we're swapping it for because I don't think we'll ever be able to do anything with it.
There is, pardon, there is a list of things Parks want to do with it there. So they do have some planning put into it, I don't have that with me, but I know they've put some planning into it.
There are condominiums, and it sits behind there. Are there any other questions at this point?
I mean, to Rich's point, we don't know if we're turning in good land for bad land or vice versa, or if it's comparable, or we don't know what it is without that picture.
The main point is that the school doesn't go forward without doing this because it sets us back a couple of years.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
We can't move forward with school construction until we get this put in place. If we restart the process, you're probably talking a couple of years. So this has to be done, it's the final step in a long process.
They couldn't wait till our next meeting so that we could do it.
Well, they're already spending, getting ready to spend money and do things for the.
Right. And this has been out there for quite a while, quite a while.
I've moved to table so that we can all get a better look at this.
Councilor Zeperry has made a motion to table this. Is there a second to table?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is this a debatable motion?
I need a clarification, I'm sorry.
Okay, hold on one minute, please.
This is not debatable.
It's not debatable. So we can't debate. Can I, can I talk? No.
Can we put it on the next C O W meeting?
We have that on the floor.
Yes, we can't, we can't debate at this point. So.
You can pick it up from the table, I mean, you got a vote on it, but you.
Right. We have to take a vote on the tabling at this point. So all those in favor of tabling, raise your hand, please, and keep your hand up until the clerk calls your name, please.
Morosik, Oberg, Zeperry.
Opposed to tabling, please raise your hand, keep it up until the clerk calls your name.
Schmidt, Atwater, Brantowski, Heath, Franco, Parker. Motion failed.
Thank you. Again, this is, this is something that's been out there, this isn't something new that's been sprung on us this evening. This piece of land was talked about for at least months now. The maps have been out there. There was plenty of time to do your due diligence and go and look at the land. I think at this point, it would be a mistake to vote this down. So many things are riding on this one particular action of this council as far as the school being built. A lot of people did a lot of work to get, to make this happen. I know there are people that are opposed to using the Merit property for the school building, but at this point, it's pretty much a done deal. This is the last piece to make the school building happen. So this would pretty much put an end to the project if that happened. And if that's your goal, that's fine, but I think you should own it if that's your goal. I am strongly, I think we need to do this tonight. I don't, I don't think we should stall on this. I think we need to approve this and go forward with it.
I don't remember this being on the, on the Council of the Whole Meeting, but I would have liked to see the plot plan of what we're giving versus what we're taking so that we all can understand it. Because somebody's going to ask me where this land is, and I'm going to say up by the highway and so forth, but I don't know the boundaries. And I think a plot plan that our planning department could certainly draw in the matter within an hour or so.
It seems to me it's up beyond Drostick Drive, you know.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I have an idea where it is.
Right. And it seems to be very much on an habitat land.
I'm trying to bring it up now, right.
Is there somewhere on one of our websites that has this information?
It's, this was from October 31 of 2016, the day ran an article about it detailing the 20-acre property known as Boulder Heights off the end of Culver Avenue and going into the detail about it. So it's, this is not something, or Ms. Strasheim just actually left, she wrote the report on this. But it's been since October of 2016.
I believe the council had a vote before on allowing the swap for.
Yeah.
So.
I have no problem about the swap, but I was just trying to, I'd like to see what we were swapping.
Yeah, I was showing before at an earlier meeting, I can show it if anyone wants to see it on here.
If I might, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I for one can't vote on something that I really don't know what we're voting on. And I think your comments were right on. And I don't know if that everyone else knows what they're voting on. Supposedly this has been out there for a while, but it hasn't been presented here to this council, and it's now come up for a vote. And we really don't know what it is we're approving or disapproving.
And I just mentioned that we, the state keeps adding more steps on, they've announced that this is the final step, I just received it, we would have taken it to Cal otherwise. But we're right at the tight timeline for making schedules for the school. Any delay, and I'm worried about it as it is, once we send this back, how long is the state going to take before they sign it and send us the release to build? So as it is, I'm not sure where, well, we're going to make the timeline, but any delay just makes it worse. We're not going to have a choice unless you really do want to look at totally different properties, swap buying property and swapping and go through a whole big process.
Councilor Oberg?
I understand the importance of it, but, you know, the last R T M meeting, they brought in for a vote or a veto or whatever, and I was very proud of some of the R T M members, because they said, "We cannot vote on this, we are not familiar with it." I'm familiar with the property, I've walked the property, I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but if there is in fact a plan for something that they're hoping to do with it, I wish we had known that. I wish we had seen that plan. You'd feel a whole lot more encouraged with what you're doing because myself, I think that's going to be an awfully tough piece of property to work on. So that's why I'm kind of hesitant with it. I think that, I hear what you're saying, John, I just, I'm just, I don't think it was apples and apples, I think it was apples and oranges in this trade. This is buildable, the other one is not buildable without an awful lot of investment into it. And I'm just personally not comfortable with it, but I'm torn by the fact that something does need to be done. So.
I've got the list, it's not a plan, it's a list of things they wanted to have in the, that Parks wanted to have in the easement for what they could do for it. I can, it's only really three bullet points. If you want me to read it?
Yeah, yes, please.
Multi-use, sorry, multi-use natural of synthetic turf fields, or I think it meant or, multi-use natural or synthetic turf fields to address identified field shortages in town. Facilities necessary to support the establishment of athletic fields would include restroom, storage, parking, and concession. Next bullet point, nature-based discovery area playground made from natural and manufactured play elements. Facilities necessary to support area include parking and restrooms. Third bullet point, establishment of habitat restoration area. This could include clear cutting on area of trees to establish a meadow or opening in area to diversify the forest type. So that's really, it's pretty broad at this point, they don't have a detailed plan. I just want to make sure that they have the options to do those things if they can.
Councilor Schmidt, have her.
I just wanted to say that we do get this information in the mail, and everybody's had the packet and had the opportunity to read this. I would hope that in the future, we would be able to ask questions of the mayor or of the Town Manager before the council meeting so that we, if we had a lot of questions, that would be something that we would be able to take up at another time. But I think that would be the road we would want to take, and perhaps you can advise us on what is the best way for us to handle that when we do have questions.
Yeah, sure, if you see something, agenda, just shoot me an email, say, "Hey, I'd like to see this," and I'll make sure we have it available.
Right. Thank you for bringing that up. And again, I'm finding, I'm going through here and just looking things up online here, there's a Trails Coordinating Task Force from December of 2016 talking about the property and where it's located. Zero Long Hill Road, you know, needs trails and parking lot put in over the next two years, as I think the clerk had mentioned that they were looking at this as possible trails, so.
That's what it says here, recreational trails and fields.
Right.
Can we just possibly get somebody to pull up a picture? Maybe could we just take a break and somebody find a picture?
Would you like to recess for five minutes? I was just trying to find, oh, do you have it available?
Yeah, it's just reloading now.
Okay, great. If you, where did you find it on the party?
Give you the website upload.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do, too.
I went to our, through our town website, right to the G I S.
Oh, okay.
And then if you look at that interchange there, right there, where you have 95 and you have 112, that's right below that configuration, I'm using the area. So here you can see, you might have walked from this.
No, please, thank you.
That kind of thing, it almost looks like a finger pointing there, that's the piece of property, I'll show it just as a parcel first, and then I'll show here.
It's close to where the submarine is, isn't it? With the Groton submarine.
I know it's Clarence B., what is that?
Zero Long Hill Road.
Like coming on the highway, is that the Clarence B.?
Adam Clerk said Long Hill Road, is that what he said? Yeah.
So you can see sort of a finger pointing there. I'll show there, I'll just second.
It's off of 95.
But as you're coming off the Clarence B., sharp code, like to miss it. I think he's going to show that.
Dimensions.
I don't know. He's kind of.
Didn't you have it right there, the finger?
Can we take a five-minute break, please?
Would you like to recess for five minutes?
Yes.
All right, well, stand and recess for five minutes, we'll start up again at eight o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are, the council's out of recess, and after we did some exploration and looked around, we found some maps and took a look where everything is, we're back in, and on the table we have 2017-0298 Boulder Heights Conservation Easement. Councilor Atwater?
Patrice, my understanding from the discussion and so forth is that they voted a year and a half ago to build a middle school, and it's been in the process now for a year and a half. You pointed out a lot of information that's been happening and so forth. It seems like now we're at the point, we just want to go out and kick the tires before we buy the car, but we need the car, so let's make the decision and do it. I don't see why we want to postpone it or table it or whatever. It's, my understanding is it's got to be done, so let's, let's do it.
Okay, see no further discussion, then, all those in favor of 2017-0298 Boulder Heights Conservation Easement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Morosik? Abstaining? 7, 1, 1. That motion passed. And that leads us to Roman numeral 10. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The make. Moved by Parker, seconded by Atwater. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. Thank you.